June thirteenth, Planning Board meeting. And I believe I misplaced my, thank you. Yes, I just moved my agenda to the wrong stack. So, yes, this is the June thirteenth meeting of the Harwich Planning Board. Does anybody in attendance intend to record the meeting? If so, please let the Chair know. If not, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start this evening by calling on our member, David Harris. I received an email from you, I believe, this week. Did I not?
They did.
Okay, maybe it came by accident. I don't know, it was a intention of service? Or was this a delay or resend? Okay, I'm surprising you.
Say that again, I may have misunderstood you.
I got an email, I believe, from you this week.
On what subject?
On the subject of your service on the Board.
I didn't send you an email this week.
Okay, you sent.
I sent it, there was a lady that sent me an email, and I responded to her. She was clarifying that I am not seeking another term.
Okay, that's, well, that's what I wanted to clarify in public then, okay. All right, so I did receive it, then I'm not going crazy here.
If I copied you, I've forgotten that I copied you.
Okay, you did copy me, and I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record. Okay.
I think it was just clarifying what I had already established.
Right, okay. All right, well, this evening we start with case number, in the public hearings, case number PB 2023-09. Elaine Brockway and Richard Meehan through their agent attorney, William Kroll, have applied for a special permanent waiver of site plan review to construct a detached residential structure with a bedroom. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-44B and 325-55F and Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Property is located at 1365 Orleans Road, Accessors Map 74, Parcel K 2-1, in the rural residential RR and drinking water resource protection, DWRPD zoning districts.
So, I'm Elaine Brockway, and this is Richard Meehan, my husband. And we're here tonight, instead of Attorney William Kroll, to request a special permit for 1365 Orleans Road.
If you care to tell us anything about.
We went through this last time we were here.
Right.
So I think that's probably all written there.
Well, I can give you a brief summary.
Why don't we just refresh our memories as.
Okay. If you have any of the documentation there handy, we have a small workshop on our property, and we're planning to add to that a residential structure with a bedroom. And we're going to move the small building forward by 12 feet, so it'll be within, it'll be actually at the 25-foot lot line. The proposed residential building is a small, I think it's 26 by 24, so it's a relatively small building. And it'll have a bedroom, a sitting room, but no kitchen. Bedroom, sitting room, and a bathroom.
Okay. I'm suspecting that the original hearing was when I probably was out of town, which is why this is not coming back to me.
It was, it was March 28th, so it was like a couple of months ago.
It was when I was out of town, correct. Okay, so, I think I ran that meeting. I'm not sure if I can vote on this or this point, I guess. Presumably, since it's a new hearing.
It's a new hearing.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, Paul, did you want to bring us up to speed then? Thanks, appreciate it.
So this, the Planning Board did hold a hearing on March 28th. Unfortunately, the, the meeting was not properly posted. As a result, we needed to have a rehearing of this case, and I want to publicly apologize to Richard and Elaine for what happened. This has messed up, delayed their, their schedule to have this project completed. And this has cost them some, some heartache having to come back. But at the, the March 28th hearing, there were, was no, there were no comments from any of Butters, and the Board unanimously voted to approve the special permit. There, as Elaine mentioned, they're proposing to, to put a bedroom in the workshop and do some work on that building. This also kind of points out an odd situation in our zoning bylaw where now you can do an accessory apartment as a matter of right without a special permit. But these folks that want to put a residential bedroom in an existing outbuilding need a special permit. The Building Commissioner, you know, mentioned this to me this week and said, you know, maybe we need to take a look at that and make, make this process a little smoother. But having said that, given the fact that we, we didn't have any concerns raised back on the 28th of March, and that the Board unanimously voted this, I'm recommending to the Board to, to take a vote to approve the project. Let them move forward.
Very good. Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the public? Do we want to have a?
Sir, Chairman.
Ms. Erin?
Just make a motion to, first, to close the public hearing, which I know is, but we are in a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So I'd take a mo, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
So next, I want the motion to adopt the following findings of fact. First, that the applicants and owners are Elaine Brockway and Richard Meehan. Two, the subject property is located at 1365 Orleans Road in Harwich, Map 74, Parcel K 2-1, with a lot area of 20,909 square feet. Three, the lot is located in the residential rural RR and drinking water recharge protected district, zoning districts. Four, the applicant's proposed to slightly move and alter an existing workshop in order to create an accessory residential structure with a bedroom. Five, Butters to the subject property were notified of the public hearing and provided an opportunity to comment on the application. Six, in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to that site, the Board finds that the proposed change of the workshop into an accessory residential building with bedrooms is appropriate and does not represent a detriment to the neighborhood. Seven, the applicants have met all requirements for an accessory residential building with one bedroom pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I make a motion that we, the Planning Board votes to grant a parking waiver and a waiver of site plan review, as well as grant a special permit to relocate an existing detached accessory structure and renovate it to create an accessory structure with a bedroom at 1365 Orleans Road, based on the following conditions. One, the decision shall run with the property. Two, the decision shall not be effective until the approved special permit certificate of action and the plan are recorded at the Marstonville County Registry of Deeds. The applicant shall submit proof of recording to the Planning Department prior to the start of construction. Three, changes to the site plan not authorized under this decision may require further Planning Board review and modifications to this decision. And four, the applicant shall conform to all inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the special permit section of the Harwich Code.
I have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's it?
That's it. Thank you, and I appreciate your patience with us on this matter.
Thank you.
Give us a call tomorrow, we can have that ready for you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is case number PB 2023-07, which is continued from the 14th of March, the 11th of April, the 25th of April. It's Round Cove Resort Owner LLC and Four Cove Landing Road Owner LLC are seeking a site plan review and new special permit for an increase in allowed hotel motel use by more than 7,500 square feet of floor area, as required pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw sections 325-9, 325-51. The proposed building expansion is to create additional hotel rooms and to renovate buildings at Wacocet Resort and Golf Club. The property is located at 2173 Route 28, Head of the Bay Resort, Map 115, Parcel S 1-3, in the Commercial Highway 2, CH 2 zoning district. My understanding that they have requested a continuance on this.
To June 27th.
To June 27th. So, why don't we see if we can get a motion about the 27th?
I would just like to note that I did not participate on April 25th, so I will not be participating.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the request for continuance for Round Cove Wacocet from today to be continued to June 27th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
A motion, may I have a second? A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is PB 2023-18. Cape Roots Market and Cafe through its agent, Gabe Leidner, has applied for a site plan review and a special permit in order to expand seating area to allow for additional outdoor seating. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-55 and 325-51L and Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Property is located at 557 Route 28, Accessors Map 14, Parcel V 9-203, in the Commercial Village, Harwich Port District. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please introduce yourselves and.
Brooke Leidner, I'm Gabe Leidner.
Okay.
So essentially, we're just trying to up our seating from 24 seats to 50. It'd be, so there'd be 20 outside and 30 inside. We've been open for two years now, and we're just getting busier. We just like more seating for our customers.
And is there more on the plan that you, what we care to discuss? Or should we have one?
Yeah, right now we have, it's about, about the parking. And right now we have, so we're going for 50 seats. Right now we have 34 seats, or 34 parking spots out in the back. And.
We have more after 5 o'clock and on the weekends.
Yeah, Mr. Waystack said we can use his after 5 o'clock, and so that would be 44 total parking spots for us.
Great.
After 5:00, 34 during the day.
And we received his letter in support of your project, so that looks like it's pretty well aligned. Paul, did you want to give us the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the applicant applied for a special permit to increase their seating both inside and outside. This, this is actually a modification to an existing special permit from 2019. And in that special permit, the Board capped the number of seats at 24. They are requesting some additional seating inside and outside. They've submitted an existing site plan from 2017 and have marked it up to identify the spaces assigned to their business. This is a, a property that has, it's mixed use, so there are residential units on the second floor and office space. And in addition to professional office space, residential, retail, and restaurant, there is also, Cremery Liquors utilizes that lot. So they, they share that lot, and depending on the time of day, some businesses have, have more business at certain times of the day, and other businesses are quiet. And an example is they, they do a breakfast and lunch at, at their store, and something like Cremery Liquors might not open up until a little bit later and would see their activity pick up later in the day. So the zoning bylaw does allow for, for shared parking in Section 208-2, and there's a footnote that indicates that. And given the circumstances of a tight village center and limited parking, it, it makes sense to allow those businesses to all share the parking. Tonight, we have two cases of, from two applicants that are, are looking to memorialize additional seating and, and outdoor seating. And it is a, a result of what happened during the pandemic and the, the success these businesses have had by, by allowing their patrons to sit outside and, and enjoy eating outside. Across the state, that, that we are, our, the state legislature is, is changing regulations to allow for this kind of thing. And they've come in to request additional seats, and that's a, it's a good thing. It's important for the town to support its local businesses, and, and this is economic development. And, and we've got, we've got two, two groups here tonight seeking to formalize their outdoor seating. While the, the parking is tight in that area, I've looked at the plans and did a site visit at noon time yesterday to see what was going on, and the lot was, you know, 80% full, but I pulled in and found a parking space. So I know that, that there are residents that are very concerned about the parking problems in the downtown area. And I understand that, but it's, it's a couple of months, and it's a, it's a function of businesses doing well. And so I'd ask the Board to consider allowing the additional seating, to, to let them go forward with that and to kind of formalize, you know, allowing that outdoor seating so that they can continue to grow their business.
Paul, could you do me a favor and summarize the Cohen letter contra argument for us?
The.
The Cohen, the, Mr. Cohen, who was, who was the only one that I saw in the packet that was contra the proposal.
I'm wondering if.
You are, sorry. Mr. Cohen's.
Mr. Counselor here.
So we did receive a letter from a gentleman that lived in the neighborhood, and he's raised some concerns about the parking in Harwich Port, the increase of off-street parking causing problems, negatively impacting people that live across the street. And, and that's the thrust of, of his letter. He goes on to talk about the Seagrove, and, and that's not a problem, but has some concerns about the Board allowing the additional requested parking.
Okay, so that was pretty much what I got out of it. I was just making a statement that it's tight. I get that. I mean, I think we went through this also with the new proposed building that's going in it down near the corner of Bank Street, too. So, I mean, this is going to be an issue, and this is, is actually a good problem to have, right? So, let me start with Dave, please.
Yeah, I think it's also, having observed a lot of the evening activity in Harwich Port, as I live close to downtown and spend a lot of time there, I also recognize that a lot of their people that shop at Roots are also downtown for other purposes, shopping in commercial stores and so on. So they're already in the town. They're not adding parking. So I think in support of, of this, this special request, I think that that's a factor that could be considered.
Thank you, Dave. Mary?
So, I, I'm certainly in favor of the expanded seats. My concern is that we do it correctly, because if I recall correctly, when it was originally permitted, it was permitted for retail, because it was for retail spaces. And then I believe you came back in and we re-permitted it for, for the.
Food service.
Fast food takeout, right, or for the, for the market.
Yes.
So we had to, we had to deal with the parking. I also seem to recall that there is a parking agreement that I don't believe we have as part of our record, but Cremery Liquors has the three spaces. You have retail spaces that are, that are reserved for the, for the, not retail spaces. You have residential spaces that are reserved for the upstairs apartments.
For condos, yeah.
Yes.
And then you have the real estate spaces that, that we have on record here from the Waystacks that you can use after 5:00 PM.
Yes.
So certainly that, that promotes, certainly gives you extra spaces, at least at night. I guess my second question is to Paul. They are close to municipal parking, and I know traditionally, if you are close to municipal parking, you can use the municipal parking spaces to help with your, with your parking numbers. Are they close enough that we can not need to grant a waiver and that their, the municipal spaces are, are, can be attributed to the difference? So I just want to make sure that if we're going to do this, if we have to vote a waiver, and the Board's in support of a waiver, then we just do it correctly so that it's papered correctly.
There is a section of the parking regulations that allows for off-street parking within a certain distance, and that's the number that's not in my head right now, whether it's 300 feet or something like that. There's also a section that indicates that, that businesses can utilize the public parking lot. And that section goes on to say that, that the Planning Board has to approve that, and that the Planning Board has somehow, over time, been keeping track of which businesses were using so many spaces. And I've seen this in zoning bylaws before, and I, I just kind of chuckled, like, I, I'd be very surprised if we do have an accurate, up-to-date count of which businesses. So that's my response. Yes, there is a section of the bylaw that allows for that. I don't know what, I don't have a sense for, for, you know, how full those public parking lots are at different times of the day.
And to be honest, I don't know that the, that the bylaw charges us with, with having to know that. It's the, I think it's more the fact that there is public parking available that can work to their favor.
Yeah.
I know, I know we discussed that issue when we were talking about, I believe, Outer Cape with the Saka Taka parking lot across the street and with the, and with the dockside and the parking in the lot. So I, I just, I don't know what, what the distance is there. But I also think, two, your business, are, are you now open at night? Are we talking, because I seem to recall there were hours on the, there may have been hours on the grocery at one point.
Yeah, so.
So I'm not sure whether that, whether the hours on the grocery need to be expanded.
Yeah, we closed, right now, right around 6:00.
Yeah.
And during peak season, we're going to close probably around, we're going to lock the doors at 8:00, and then everybody will be out by 9:00. So it's not going to be like a night, night spot at all.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're, if we're accounting for one issue, that we're counting for all of them.
And there's also 62 spots in the parking lot right now. We have 34 of them specifically for Cape Roots.
Okay.
So.
So 34.
And then 44 with.
Yeah, and that's. Forty-four after 5:00 PM.
Right, this was what, was the marked up, this is what we were talking about, the marked up 2017 plan, Paul?
So based on the 34, Paul, you're saying that they would actually need 41? No, they need seven more.
I thought they needed six or seven new spaces to meet the, the code. I'm looking up that distance on the public parking.
We know it's busy, and we know it's busy in the, in the high season.
Right.
And I, and I do understand the people on the side streets, but it's an existing business that's.
Correct.
I think it's going to get. People sit outside, they sit inside, they sit, they're going to stand at the bar.
They'll be coming from the parking lot.
So.
The public parking lot to come to get a coffee or whatever, you know? Like, that's how the town, that's how it circulates, so. Not every person who's coming through your doors is, demands a parking space.
We have a lot of people that walk through the path from the cottages behind and up the road, and we do have a lot of.
I think you're, you're probably not policing them throughout the day when people are parking and, and staying when they're going other places besides.
Right.
Yeah, we do, we do police that. We do police that as far as people parking there, going to the beach or.
Yeah.
Or other establishments, so we do police that, too.
This is one of the most, the exemplary cases of having the parking spots marked for residents and who can park where, and makes it easier. Any further questions from the Board? Dave?
Yeah, I have one unrelated to the parking. In the other application for the special permit for the restaurant, I recall in reading this that it sunsets after two years, and they have to go through the special permit application again two years from now. Is that, is that correct, Paul?
I don't recall. I'm sorry?
I said, in, in reading the Seagrove application, I recall that it was something in, either in your memo or somewhere that they have to apply for this special permit two years from now. In other words, this, if it's approved, sunsets in two years. Is that the case, or did I misread it?
I think that, that was standard language that's at the end of all these special permits, that they have to, within two years, exercise those permits.
Yeah, it's not a, you're talking about the, it, it's the fact that under, under the special permit law, that if you don't, just like under a building permit, you don't substantially exercise the permit within two years of the issuance, then it, then it lapses. So that's not an issue here, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did find that section of the Code.
Oh, great, thanks.
So under Section 325-44, special cases, A, parking space may be provided on lots separate from non-residential use they are to serve, and B, created to such use in meeting the requirements of this bylaw, provided that they are legally available, are not designated as off-street parking for another use, and are within 300 feet of the principal structure measured within the street right-of-way. Proof of legal availability shall be required, and failure to retain the availability of such parking spaces for the need they are required to serve shall be sufficient cause to deny or revoke a special permit unless such spaces are restricted or replaced. When such parking spaces are part of town-owned and town-operated parking lots, the Planning Board shall determine the availability based on town need, and the applicant shall not be required to furnish proof of such availability.
Well, there it is.
So 300 feet was right, and.
And it's town-owned.
Do we think we're, do we think we're within 300 feet?
That's basically the frontage.
100 yards?
That's the frontage of Three Monkeys. That's certainly.
That's Tweedville, I think?
That's, yeah.
Yes, but your parking lot's on the other side of Three Monkeys.
Right, but so, but I mean, it's from the one piece of property to the next. If you do centerline to centerline, certainly not 100 yards.
Probably not to the parking space.
Right. I mean, it's just one building's width, basically. Craig, I know you had a question before we.
Yeah, I don't know, I just want to make sure Mary's done.
No, go ahead, I'm still looking.
Okay, thank you. Unrelated specifically to the case, but Paul, you raised the issue about using the municipal lot as spillover or part of meeting the requirements, as long as they're 300 feet and so forth. But to your point, we probably don't have any data, here I go again, in terms of how much overage or how much allocation somebody. So if there's 100 spaces in the municipal lot, and over time, we've approved permits that are, have, you know, if you accumulate them, maybe we've given, not given away, but allocated more than is even available there. So just going forward. So, just going forward, not related to this case, but I think it's a good idea if that can get, if we have data historical, add to, if not, maybe something we can start to track.
Since you have been on the board a long time, do you have recollection of doing this in the past with telling applicants that could you?
I have recollection of us doing that, but not recording it or keeping that data anywhere. There may be, if that were part of the conditions, um, that may be detailed with the, the approval process. I, I don't know.
Chair and I will, will hunt around and see if we can find any records of that.
Thank you.
Whatever was, whatever was voted would be in the, the last, the special permits. So, I mean, do we have copies of their existing special permit and the revised?
We have, I think we have a copy of their 19th special permit that we put in the packet, but I don't think we went beyond that.
Right, but the, the, the- Am I missing the 19?
Yeah, I don't see the 19 here.
I don't see the 19th special permit, Paul?
I don't want it.
I just want to make sure that if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right. Mr. Chair, could I just ask?
Please.
What do you find is your busiest time of day? Is it, is it-
Pretty much have like-
Late time, is it noon time, is it?
Yeah, it really kind of varies. We, you know, the, um, the morning gets busy because our, we have the bakery and coffee, um, going, but then our deli gets really busy around noon, um, when people are ready for lunch. Um, and then we get busy again around 5:00, when people are looking for some dinner food. So we're, you know, um, kinda, yeah, it comes in waves, exactly.
So I guess, I would say from my perspective, the extra, um, one of the extra Waste Act spaces.
Three, was it three for?
10 after 5:00 P.M., I think.
Thanks. So, I mean, from my perspective, the extra 10 after 5:00 o'clock are helpful, I think, the extra. Knowing that the public parking is available across the street is helpful.
Excuse me, when the upstairs, when the condos are vacant upstairs, too, um, we're allowed to park there. So that's like another eight spots, potential, potential other eight.
My only concern, my only concern with that is that it's temporary, right? Until, until you're, you know, the landlord sells them and then-
Right.
Then you're gonna be short again.
Yeah, true.
So, you know, I hate to rely on those. Like, at least we, at least we know for now that, you know, based on the parking, the parking agreement, which I advocated for getting a copy of the parking agreement and it didn't happen at the time, but, um, so.
And these aren't marked, these are cranberry, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I guess my, from my perspective, um, you know, if we're, would have to vote to amend the seating, to increase the seating, just think we need to, I, I, without the original one, I don't know what our, what the original parking requirement was and what the, what the waiver was.
Just a different one?
So maybe you didn't have, let's just say. Paul, is it, you believe that we didn't issue a parking waiver in the prior? Do you think they had enough already with their existing seats?
So I, I think the 2019 decision references the first special permit.
Right, it references that all conditions that were in the first special permit continue, which, I mean, I would, I would say unless they contradicted, unless they were superseded by these, by new conditions.
We should, can, can include that language, that, that all existing conditions remain in place and a vote to modify, uh, condition number one in the 2019 special permit, which states the total number of seats shall not exceed 24. It goes on to say, number two, no more than six outdoor seats are allowable at through 28th street side of the building and said seat shall not restrict sidewalk or impede accessibility. And the last one relates to signs. So, um, it would be a modification of conditions one and two of the 2019 permit.
But I think we also have to vote on a, we either have to vote on a waiver or agree that, that, we have to either, in my own opinion, vote on a waiver and say that we're allowing the waiver because of the fact that there's additional parking spaces available to them after 5:00 P.M. and because of the vaca, the vacant apartments and the fact that there's, that there's public parking available within, um, within 300 feet of the lot line. I don't see how we can do it without that.
Yeah, that, that could be a finding or, or a separate vote on those items.
So I just want to make sure I get this right. So your total number of seats, you're applying for now 50 from?
From 24 to 50.
And it's how many inside and how many outside?
So it'd be 20 outside and 30 inside. We have, uh, we have 34 spots, too, and, um, we were told that each car, each spot accounts for four heads. So that'd be like up for 136.
Right.
So. All, uh, we, we have 34 spots that are dedicated just for the market. You know, there's 62 spots in the, uh, in the lot. Some are for the con, for the condos, some are for Cranberry Liquors, and some are for Mr. Waste Act, so. We have, we have more than half of those.
So we had a condition, um, I'm, I'm just asking for opinions here from folks. So we had the condition that no more than six outdoor seats were allowable on the street side of the building. Where are your other seats proposed?
So, we see, no, they're right out in front of the market. There's-
We have four in one corner, two on one corner, and then the rest are out front. Like, kinda hugging the building.
Yeah, so there's two, there's two overhangs in the front. So we're gonna put two tables there and then there'll be four, like, uh, right out in the front, right on 28.
So you'll have 16 on the street side?
There'll be 20. There's one, two, three, four. Four, four tops and, uh, two, two tops.
Yeah, so.
Two on the, on the two.
Okay.
Yeah, the overhangs, it makes it a little confusing. That's actually outside.
Yeah, 'cause that's in that little alcove that was, that's the extra doorway.
Right.
Yes.
When it was contemplated as being-
Canopy.
Cell space.
Yes.
Little shady spot.
So I would say those are all still on the street side of the building. At the time, in 2019, were you-
Seven.
You were not staying open until 8:00 P.M. at that point, correct?
No, we've never stayed open till 8:00, really. Only if we have a function. We've had a couple of functions where we stay open after 6:00, but normally it's right around 6:00.
Or 7:00, yeah, 6 or 7.
Six, between 6:00 and 7:00, yeah.
In the summer, but in the winter, it's always been 6:00.
And you're proposing 8:00 as your closure time now?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we open at 7:00 in the morning. We're not gonna stay open.
Okay. I thought I saw some document that said 9:00.
Well, we figure, like-
Oh, we figure we lock the door and then everybody, everybody, no, nobody's coming in after 8:00 and then people finish up and they be on.
Last call.
Yeah, exactly.
And we proposed a condition that operations, um, would cease no later than 8:00 P.M.?
Um, so we, we plan on locking the doors at 8:00 and then everybody out by 9:00 o'clock or so. But that's only peak season, too, I mean.
I would think, I would think you're, you're, I would think if your operations are ceasing, you're, you're not serving, you're not doing anything. That's people getting out.
Yes, yeah, just letting people finish up and cleaning up.
Paul, what's your opinion on, um, on the need for a waiver? Or would you recommend that we, um, make a statement something to the effect that, um, in the event that it's determined that a waiver is necessary, the, the, um, planning board makes the finding that the additional spaces for, the additional spaces that exist in public parking, the residential spaces that are currently not used and the, and the, the estate-
Peaks of activity, yeah. I, I think a waiver would be a good idea to, to just support and mention those, um, three factors.
Yeah, Craig, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure Mary's done.
Go ahead, I'm writing.
Okay. I have a question, unrelated to parking. Related to the, the additional seating in the, in the front. How much space do you know from the front of the building to the, I guess you're gonna put up some kind of barricade or rope, uh?
So the, the property for that building, it goes out eight feet from the, uh, from the, the building under the sidewalk, eight feet, so.
So from the building to the, the break where the seating's gonna be is eight feet?
Yes.
Do you know, happen to know what that leaves for sidewalk from the eight feet to the curb of the road?
It's at least another, what would you say?
Well, we said there was like a four-foot table, five feet.
It's gotta be like another 10 feet, probably another 10 feet, I'd say.
Okay.
Maybe 12.
And my concern is just for pedestrian traffic, and I know two or three years ago, we had a multi-meeting discussion about, uh, signs, specifically sandwich boards and how the size they can be and they can block access and everything. And a concern might be if somebody, uh, decides to put a, a sandwich board out there and there's only so much. It might restrict it. I'd hate to see people wa, step off the curb into the road.
Oh, yeah, we-
Sure.
No, there's, there's plenty of room.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we actually-
From our barriers, there'll be, there'll be plenty of room for the sidewalk. I wish I had the right, the right measurement, but I don't. I can get that for you, though.
We're not planning on having large tables either. It's gonna be like a four-top table. We actually bought one before and we decided it's too big. We want enough space for people walking by. So we're trying to be really careful about that, so there's plenty of room for strollers and, you know, wheelchair and plenty of room. Is there a type of sign that you would recommend that might be okay or just no sign?
No, I, I'm, uh, saying that we enacted regulations two or three years ago about sizes of, I think specifically sandwich boards. I can't remember what they were, two-by-three or three-by-two, and they have to be calculated into other signs on the building and so forth.
Okay. It's all part of our sign bylaw.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just saying, I don't know what the specifics of the size are off the top of my head. Is this something, Paul, that, uh, fire marshal or building department would look at and just say, okay, there's, everybody's comfortable, there's enough space, there's no hazard to pedestrian traffic?
I think that, that the important point is that there needs to be a minimum of like five or six feet for pedestrians to walk along the sidewalk to provide that space. And I think it would make sense to include a condition to just make that really clear.
So, and that would, if a sign board were to go out there, that would, could possibly reduce the, whatever it is, 10 feet to eight or six feet to four.
They gotta maintain that.
The sign boards have to, under this, under the rule that we passed, sign boards have to be on their property.
Oh, okay.
It can't be on the, on the right-of-way. And the same is true of the, of, of these tables. These are all within your property lines, correct?
Right, it's kinda hard to get a hard comment on that thing, yeah.
Because you'd set the bill, the building was, even though it was on the sidewalk, you had enough room on the, on your own property and then the sidewalk is unimpeded.
You can see it on the-
We have that as a condition anyway.
Well, and you can also just see it on the, the, um, the site plan drawing, the way it's set up, that the apron is probably, uh, three times wider than the area that's being used for the tables.
Tight to the building, the tables be right up against the building.
Dave, sorry, I wanted to get to you, apologize.
Thanks.
When this building was, was, uh, before the planning board, and I don't know that it was specifically mentioned then, but as they built it, since I was spending a lot of time down in town, there is far more space between this building and the curb-
Right.
Than the other buildings. Even with the tables there, there's more room between those tables and the curb than there is in front of the saloon and other, so there's ample space there.
And before I forget, you know, is, there's nobody here from the public that wanted to address this, but is there anybody online that wanted to address the board or the applicant? Okay, just want to make sure. It looks like you're ready. It looks like you're ready.
So, no comments from the public?
No comments from the public.
Okay, then I would, um, move that we vote to close the public hearing.
And a second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Hearing is closed.
I would move that we vote to adopt the following findings of, additional findings of facts, relative to the application, which is PB twenty-
Eighteen.
Three eighteen.
Thirteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. One, that the additional outdoor and, uh, outdoor seating requested will not provide a, will not create a nuisance to, um, pedestrians. I guess I'll just say that it will provide a nuisance, create a nuisance, um, that the number of seats, the additional, um, outdoor seats will all be on the street side of the building. I don't know what I mean, uh, and that, um, the planning board makes the finding that to the extent a parking waiver is, um, necessary that the, um, or grants the waiver based on the findings that A, applicants currently have use of residential spaces, as the residential units at the location are currently not occupied. B, that the spaces allocated to Babylon Sunset Trust are available to the applicants after five PM daily. And C, that there is a public parking lot within three hundred feet of the property line, um, which is available to the applicants according to the terms of the town's zoning by law, and as such, I would vote that we adopt the aforementioned findings of fact and grant a parking waiver, um, as necessary.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So, then I would vote that we, um, grant the following, um, right, despite site plan review, special permit for PB twenty nineteen dash, uh, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-three dash eighteen, I believe you brought that up, I think?
Yep.
Based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the following, and based on the following conditions.
Did we vote to close the meeting?
To increase the outdoor, the indoor and outdoor seating, uh, to twenty outdoor, thirty indoor at the property located at five five seven Route twenty-eight, formerly known as Harwich Port Commons, um, now the business named Cape Loos, which is located at map fourteen parcel V nine in the C dash B and RH one zoning districts. Uh, the decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact, and that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval according to the code of the town of Harwich, and the fact that the retail use is permitted in the zoning district and the restaurant shaft food takeout use special permit has been approved. Uh, the following additional conditions are imposed. One, that the total number, um, of seats shall not exceed fifty, that being twenty outside and thirty inside, based on the plan submitted with the application. Two, no more than twenty outdoor seats are allowable on the street side of the building without review, uh, without additional and further review and approval of the planning board. Three, said outdoor seating shall not restrict sidewalk use or impede accessibility. Four, all previous conditions imposed by the planning board pursuant to PB twenty sixteen dash twenty, PB twenty seventeen dash thirteen, and PB twenty nineteen dash forty-seven shall be adhered to except to the extent that said conditions are superseded by, uh, new condition, new conditions voted in this decision. Five, all signage shall comply with the requirements of the code of the town of Harwich and the parish building department. Six, this decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Seven, conformance with all review procedure requirements outlined pursuant to four hundred dash eighteen dot G. Inspection, certificate of completion and as well plan of the code of the town of Harwich shall be met. Eight, the operations, um, at the business shall, uh, cease no later than, uh, eight PM, and the business shall be fully vaca, vacated by nine PM, um, each evening. And that the, uh, special site plan review special permit, um, is hereby granted, uh, based on, the documentation provided in the application dated four nineteen, twenty twenty-three. And one question before I finalize, Paul, are you okay with the map submitted as the site plan, or do you need a, a final actual site plan?
I understood that, that the applicant was gonna have to go out and hire an engineer or surveyor to do a new plan. I don't think any conditions have changed since the twenty seventeen plan, so I thought that that was acceptable.
Okay. So, wherever you're at.
Very good. We have a motion?
A second.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll see you for coffee soon.
Sounds like it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
There you go.
So that takes us to the last hearing of the evening, uh, case number PB twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, Blue Striped LLC doing business as Cape Seagill, through its agent Jennifer Ramler, has applied for a waiver of site plan review and a special permit in order to add a bathroom and expand their outdoor seating capacity. Sounds familiar. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-five and three twenty-five dash fifty-one, and Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section nine. Property is located at thirty-one C Street, assessors map fourteen, parcel V two, in the residential high density zoning district RH one. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, we are in front of you today because we would like to do a lot of things. Um, we need to increase our building, our occupancy, which uh, up to a hundred and ninety-eight, which by code we're allowed to do. We wanna increase our seating capacity to a hundred and forty-four people. We have a septic for a hundred and forty-five. Um, but we need a waiver of site plan review, um, to use the existing patio that we created for COVID, which we've been using without incident or complaint for the last three years, um, tented per the building department, but we'd like to have that permanent, so we could do that every year. Um, we also, per the, um, state plumbing code, um, they, uh, we are, originally we're supposed to add two bathrooms. The town thought we could get a waiver because we don't ever have a line or any problems with that, um, but the state wanted us to add one bathroom, so we need to put a tiny little addition on that north side of the building. It's kinda behind some shrubs, not really in anybody's way, um, to add one bathroom. It will be shingled and kinda look just like the rest of the building. And then we also are looking for a waiver of parking. We currently have thirty spots with two handicap. Um, we have a very large gravel overflow parking, um, that in the off-season, when it's not very busy, we use for staff, but we have a parking agreement as included in here with the Port Center Building, to park our employees down there, and it's all, they have, keep Seagill stickers on their car, and they have the license plates, and so they knew who our staff is. So, that lot can comfortably hold eight to twelve cars, um, and per the building code, we need one, um, spot for every four patrons, so that's thirty-six spots. So, we have thirty of the paved and then eight to twelve for the gravel overflow.
Very good. Paul, do you wanna, uh, enlighten us onto the staff report?
So, uh, I don't really have much to add to, um, what Jennifer has just explained to the board, but she mentioned that she went to the state, um, she applied to the state, um, plumbing board to grant a waiver, and, uh, they said no, and so as a result, she's building, um, they're gonna build an additional bathroom to, um, to meet those code requirements. So, it's, it's, that's one piece of the project, and the other is to kinda memorialize the use of the outdoor deck, um, and, and tent for outdoor seating to, to continue their success from the last few years, um, after the pandemic. To allow that, it's something that, um, people seem to wanna, you know, eat outside, um, at certain times when the weather's good, and, um, I would, uh, recommend approval of, of their request.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Light 'em up, Dave. Nothing, no. Okay, Craig?
I think it's a great project, um, and I would just like to add, uh, this was a very helpful, complete, informative packet. I enjoyed reading it. Um, it was all the relevant data that we needed, and I think that's an indication of why. I don't have any questions, anyway.
Right.
Great job.
And the, the correspondence, the whole thing, right?
Yeah.
Agreed? All right, any questions?
So, my only additional question is with your liquor license. I'm assuming you have to go back to the board of selection to amend your liquor license.
Yeah, 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 for the, for, well-
And your-
Yes and no.
Okay.
Not this year because the governor has already approved it.
So, your outdoor seating is fine?
But we, so we're out, yes, so we're like, yeah, we're all fine, so everything is-
Because it's the same as it was last year and we're still under the extended road rules?
Exactly, yes. So, what we do have to do is get that memorialized as well. So, we do have to go back in front of them because it, it will have to permanently state on our liquor license, how many seats we have outside, how many seats we have inside, the definition of space and all of that. And then even the board of health, um, said, as soon as we go through you, because our septic is good and we've already, um, we had the site plan reviewed, we just, we had a site planned done because we thought we were gonna have to do that, we, turns out, well, whatever, we had that done, and then the interior analysis. So, everything is there. You know, we already meet all the recommendations, so there, if, once we go through here, we're already go to, you know, just the building.
Your outdoor seating is fine under your current liquor license?
Because the governor has already extended that, yes.
Okay, and then just an aside, because I'm gonna ask it while you're here, while I think of it, um, are you doing the taco truck this?
We sold this. Well, I, I'll tell you-
Because normally we see that special permit, and it hasn't come in, and I thought of it the other night.
Well, you know, we, we had it in our parking lot for COVID, and, um, you know, we're residential and this is the main reason we're here, so everything we do has to come in front of the board, and you know, it, it, it just, it's too much.
Right. I needed a little more-
Because I hadn't seen it?
I think I need, I needed a little more time with Jen and the boys.
Yeah, because it was, we were working from, I won't even go there. It was a lot.
Okay.
Any questions from you? Oh, okay.
Um, I have no questions. I just think we have, I know we had a letter in support.
Yeah, we had a letter, and I was wondering, is there anybody in the public that wanted to address? Anybody online? Speak now, forever hold your peace? Okay.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So, I'd make a motion to adopt the following findings of fact under case PB twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, Blue Striped LLC doing business at Cape Seagill at thirty-one C Street, um, who's applied for both a waiver of site plan review relative to the parking and a, just a site plan special permit, Paul?
Yes.
A site plan special permit, um, to expand and codify the outdoor seating. The applicant is Blue Striped LLC, DBA is Cape Seagill, land owner is Douglas J. Ramler, trustee at all, and Jennifer R. Ramler, trustee. Land owner's, uh, address is Hillwalks, four fourteen Harwich Port, Melso two six four six. Location is thirty-one C Street, Harwich Court, assessors map fourteen, block V two dash R. The zoning district is in a residential high density RH dash one zoning district. Um, the development type is, uh, the expansion of outdoor seating. Lot area is forty thousand square feet. The project's, uh, size and description, uh, is the expansion of the restaurant seating, um, outdoor and the addition of a bathroom. Uh, the owners have applied for a waiver of site plan review for parking and a special permit to change and expand the outdoor seating and build a new bathroom. To comply with the state plumbing codes, the applicants are seeking permission to expand the total seating to one hundred and forty-four, which will amount to a hundred and ten inside and thirty for outside. The applicable regulations, uh, for the site plan, uh, for the special permit, site plan special permit and the waiver of site plan review for the parking are pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-one and three twenty-five dash fifty-five, C one, and Mass General Law, forty-eight, section nine. The project, uh, was, the applicant submitted a special permit application on May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the public hearing notice was advertised as Cape Guard Chronicle on May twenty-fifth and June first. Copies of the application packet were sent to the departments, um, inviting comments. The application documents include, one, Form A, an application and narrative, two, a municipal lead certificate, three, a site plan of existing conditions by Down Cape Engineering, dated two fourteen twenty-two, four, the restaurant floor plans, uh, floor one by South County Architecture and Design, dated twelve eight twenty-two, five, a request for waiver of site plan review, six, the board's application, and seven, the appropriate filing fee. Um, special peer, special permit public hearing was held on six thirteen twenty twenty-three. And I would find that the additional outdoor use, um, as developed, uh, for the additional outdoor seating will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Two, that the specific site is an appropriate location for such use, structure, or condition. It will create, uh, will create no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians. And adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes the provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities, which provide for denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for protection of drinking water supply while upon assault water abatements. The subject property has been operating as a restaurant and received a waiver of site plan special permit in two thousand nine under PB two thousand nine dash zero six. The current outdoor seating, um, has been in existence since twenty ten, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Um, during the pandemic, under the temporary relaxation of outdoor seating restrictions. There is a parking agreement, um, in place with the Port Center, which allows Seagill employees to park in the Port Center parking lot, which is located on C Street, correct? The, uh, plan dated two fourteen twenty-three, prepared by Down Cape Engineering, shows, uh, the location of the proposed bathroom. A letter of support has been submitted by Joe Ganley dated six five twenty twenty-three. And I think that is it for finding that.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would propose that the planning board vote to adopt a waiver of site plan review for the parking based on the aforementioned findings of fact that, and based on the application that the applicants have an agreement with the Port Center for, for employees to park on the C, in the, their C Street parking lot, and that your existing parking contains...
Our existing is thirty-plus gravel lot.
Contains thirty existing parking spaces plus a gravel lot for overflow.
Do we need to have anything in the motion about the bathroom?
It has nothing to do with the waiver.
Right.
Okay. A second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then I recommend that the planning board grant a site plan special permit based on the aforementioned findings of fact. The application documents with the following conditions. One, that the special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the certificate of action bearing a certification on the town court, the twenty days of the lapse after the filing of the decision, and that either no appeal has been filed, or there are no appeal has been filed within such time period and is recorded at the registry of, Parsonville County Registry, Registry of Deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner of record and the parcel address. That special permit shall last within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in general law, chapter forty-eight, section seventeen, from the grant thereof. If a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause. Three, that the proposed use shall operate in conformance with the submitted site plan and application statements referenced in the decision. Four, that the special permit will run with the land, conditions of approval shall be binding on all future owners. And five, just to ratify that the section review special permit based on the plan submitted increases the outdoor seating as detailed in the application and includes the addition of, of the bathroom as detailed in the plan submitted with the application.
A second.
And before we go any further, Paul, is there anything that I missed?
I think you got it all. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's wordy.
You do a good job with that.
I know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good luck.
So, that concludes the public hearings for the evening. Right now, we have, before we go on any further, I just wanted to ask if we, if these two lovely individuals in our audience had some business before, now just enjoying the spectacle of town government in action.
Oh, we're obuders.
You're obuders, okay.
We have big groups in one direction and the Seagrill in the other.
Oh, really? So you're actually right in between. There we go.
Yeah, that's the corner. Coming from, from Lower Bang Street, it's a U-shaped, you know, street, and we're at the first turn.
Uh-huh.
So our backyard above Seagrill, corner to corner, and then we have one house between us, but we're on the, the east, the path, the east. My only concern, but we've never had any problems, was, was the, for traffic, because so many people are sent down that little, yeah, by our house. And that's fine, because it's only a couple of months, and I'd rather have them there than on Bang Street when there's, where there's a lot of traffic. There's not too much traffic on Brown. But I do worry about the wagons and, and all the paraphernalia for the beach and, and harassed mothers and fathers trying to keep their kids together coming through the parking lot. But so far, there hasn't been any problem.
Well, thank you for your attendance here this evening.
No, nothing. We, we just, it was amazing that we, we got the first announcement from Cape Roots, but when we saw the list, I said, gee, we should get something from, from the Seagrill. The next day, the Seagrill one.
Very good. Everything's working the way it should.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item, I believe, for new business is, or excuse me, the next item is the approval for the minutes for May twenty-third. The only thing that I was missing was, did, as I recall, this was a stem-winder of a meeting. Did we close business on the same calendar day that we opened? I mean, I didn't see the time for a German. That was a long meeting, but I didn't see any problems. Did anybody have any corrections to the minutes? Do we need to pass them? Can I have a motion to accept? We have a motion to accept? Do we have a second? And a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we, thank you very much for that long exercise in record-keeping. We have a planner's report also for new business.
Don't have much to report today. We do have some other board business on the backside of the agenda, Dorset Drive Covenant and Mylar to sign.
Yes.
We have another Mylar to sign for Quintepoxic Long Pond. We have a, a release of covenant for Arthur's Way, and Mr. Chairman, I believe we have two people remote that are here for that agenda item, so maybe we could take that...
Let's do that. Very good. So who do we have up first here?
I think, I think alone, my name is Jim Roberti. I'm an attorney from Milford.
Okay.
And I represent, I represent all realty. And back in April, I think Mark Smith was there, he's the principal in company, and he had the last two lots released and posted a bond. But there was some confusion as to what the last two lots were. So the covenant that was released was signed for, was for lots one and eight, and lot eight had already been released, so we're just here tonight to get a covenant release for lots one and seven. Those are the last two lots. The other lots are all either built or under construction.
Yep, I remember, I recall this a couple of months ago, right?
It was a little weird in that, in the pan, just before the pandemic, we got lots six and seven released, and then last year, we had a customer that wanted lot eight desperately. So I think that was the time period when there was no planner, so that the, the planning board department secretary was happy to help us. And so what we did is, in May of twenty-twenty-two, we released lot eight, but recovenanted lot seven.
Right.
So I think there was a little bit of confusion on that. That's why people thought that lot eight was already released, but, I mean, lot seven was already released. So we've sent in tonight, I think that Paul has it, is a, a release for lots one and seven that I would hope that you guys could re-sign, because we got closings coming. And the only other question, thing is, is if you could write your names next to the, your signature, because sometimes the registry of deeds and bonds will get a little finicky if they can't read who's signing.
Okay.
That's my story.
Very good, thank you. We can do, we can accommodate that. Mary?
So I'd make a motion that we vote to confirm the release of covenant for lots...
One and seven.
One and seven, not...
Seven. But what's the...
Arthur's Way.
Arthur's Way.
I was just, I don't see it written on this, that's my question.
You could add that in right after lots one and seven if you want.
Okay.
On, at number two, just be certain, Arthur's Way.
So is everybody okay that we do that, that we add Arthur's Way?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yep.
So can I have a second on that motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, I so declare it.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience this evening.
Also, well, I learned a lot. That's always good. And, you know, every town is struggling with that issue. The, you know, Wellesley, I've done work there, there's a lot of issues about the right-of-way and the sidewalk, so I appreciated listening to what you guys had to say.
I'm delighted we could entertain you and instruct, as always.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Good, see ya. Bye.
And was there a second?
They have it.
The second ones are all set, okay.
Mr. Chairman, on the table, when the board members arrived tonight, there was a couple of handouts, and I just wanted to bring your attention to...
Yes.
The numbers on K P Law, dated the fifth. Provide some legal opinions to the planning board on the eight-six mile street case that's scheduled for our next meeting on two twenty-seven.
Yes, yeah.
They always get some Mylar to sign.
What do you mean, a recognition and a signature?
And we do have a covenant release for Dorset Drive.
They did that one, I recognize.
They signed that one, right?
Yeah. Any old business, then? On the agenda? Okay, very good.
Did you vote to add the covenant to Dorset? So in addition to actually signing it, it's a good idea to take...
Okay, let's take a vote on, on that. What's the, do we have a identifier on that, a case number, or...
Here. I move that we vote to endorse, is, are we just, we're endorsing a covenant on Dorset Drive and execute, and execute the Mylar, according to the registry of deeds, which was application number PB...
Two, two-three, zero.
Two, two-three...
Zero, six. We have a motion and a second, please?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
How about the Quintepoxic Long Pond Mylar, are we doing that one as well?
It's not here.
Do you know what the matter and number is?
Oops.
Can we read it off the Mylar? Well, we can at least use the address, right? Street address.
It's zero Quintepoxic or zero Long Pond.
Right. Zero Quintepoxic.
I can go grab it, it's for ma, modification.
Yeah. Sign is on, okay. Need to print your name out.
Okay.
I guess I did, I gotta send my nap to on the second one, sorry about that. Print next to you. Signature, bold page.
Pretty sure he was directing that at me.
Give it to Paul.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, as a part of the, the staff reports, can we start getting some proposed motions again? Because I feel like I'm going to miss something when I'm putting it together on the slide.
Okay. So the findings in the form of proposed motions?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Just, I mean, even, even if it's just a line to go by.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can do that. I felt that the numerous findings were not all necessary.
And we have done ones when we have just referenced a document, and we've done ones where we've read them all, and I've seen cases where people don't know what we're voting, so sometimes they feel like it's worth just putting it out there so that everybody knows what it is, but understood.
You're the one doing the heavy lifting, so it doesn't bother you. I can think of it.
So I would make a motion that we vote to sign the Mylar for zero Quintepoxic slash zero Long Pond Road, which was planning board case PB twenty-two-three-dash-ten.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we can certainly entertain a motion to adjourn and sign the Mylars in the way out if you'd so desire, unless we have any further business.
What about the, the public obudder, hearing obudder notices? Not we have to approve it or anything, but comment or anything? We're good to go?
I think we're good to go, aren't we? I mean...
Good to try.
I thought it was well-written.
Okay, good. So we'll start using those? Or maybe we'll start using them? Hopefully, we'll see a change of behavior.
Fingers crossed.
Right.
It's always painful.
Thanks.
All right.
Voice to adjourn?
A second.
A second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.